...will begin now, followed immediately by the City Council for Wednesday, April 7th, 2021.
This is a public service announcement. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings. The City Council will meet today with four voting members of the City Council remotely by telephonic conferencing system. Some city employees will also be available to participate in the same manner.
Thank you. First, we'll have the approval of minutes and a report of correspondence by the city clerks. We have no public hearings. We have one ordinance for second reading, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Parking Zones for Handicap Persons. We have one ordinance on first reading, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 16, for site plan review of stormwater control. Then we have Resolutions 1 through 22. 1, approve agenda amendments. 2, approve payrolls. 3, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. 4, authorize acceptance of grant for 2020 with the City of Perth Amboy. 5, memorial resolution for Blanquita B. Valenti. 6, approve shared service agreements with the New Brunswick Board of Education. 7, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2021. 8, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of a grant agreement for 2021 for the clicket or ticket enforcement. 9, approve resolution to authorize refunds of escrow. 10, authorize transfer of several tax and utility accounts. 11, authorized purchase by police department under NJSTART for radio communication equipment and accessories. 12, authorized purchase by Department of Planning for trash receptacles. 13, approve award of contract with John Duffy Fuel Company. 14, approve resolution authorizing a request to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. 15, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure. 16, approve amendment of Resolution R-22117 for a readjustment of contract with OMSUM. 17, approve award of contract for uniform. 18, approve resolution authorizing application and acceptance of grant for the creation of a pollinator garden. 19, approve resolution authorizing application of grant with NJDHTS. 20, approve authorization to advertise for Joyce Kilmer roadway improvements. 21, approve award of contract with Roberts Engineering. 22, Housing Authority Board reappointment of Wallace Dunlap. Then we have items for discussion by council and OEM update, public comment. The next City Council Agenda Review Session and meeting will be Wednesday, April 21st. And now I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will the clerks please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the bag vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news Tribune. Additionally, a 48-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on April 5th, 2021, as is required by law.
The City Council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a telephonic conferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the 48-hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for the public, all callers from the public will be muted. During the public comment periods, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public meeting assistants accessing the call-in number should call City Hall at 732-745-5007.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will everyone please rise in the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence to honor and remember the life of Deputy Director of Commissioners, Mr. Kenneth Armwood. Mr. Armwood was a true champion of all people and an angel among men. Something that stands out in my mind is that no matter how many events he attended, and they were plentiful in number and just in cause, and no matter how much change he affected, and it too was plentiful in number and just in cause, he never used the word "I." He never said "I was here," or "I did this," or "because of me." He was a true leader and a man of integrity who served at the pleasure of the people, for the people. He will be missed dearly as a public servant and also as a friend. Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes. Motion to accept the minutes, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Mark.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Council President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no public hearings. We have one ordinance for discussion on second reading. That is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, Add 238 Towne Street, Delete 238 Towne Street and 7 Lusbury Avenue. At this time, we will prepare to open the public hearing for this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. H.
Unmuted.
E F G. H I J. K L M. N O P. Q R S T. U V. W X Y Z. Is there any member A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. Council President, we have--
Move the ordinance.
Muted.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 16, Land Development Code, Chapter 16.24, Site Plan Review, Section 16.24.270A for Stormwater Control.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 5:30, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
And at this time, before I open the floor for resolutions, I'd like to ask Mr. Shammy to read Resolution R-042105 into the record, if you would, please.
It would be my honor, Madam Council President. Resolution R-042105, by the Municipal Council. Whereas Blanquita Bird Valenti departed this life on March 9, 2021. Whereas Blanquita Valenti was born in San Jose, Puerto Rico, she later became a resident of the City of New Brunswick for more than 60 years. She graduated from Rosemont College in Pennsylvania. Thereafter, Mrs. Valenti earned a master's degree in teaching from Seton Hall and in Spanish and Latin American literature from Rutgers University. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti worked as an educator for more than 38 years, teaching at Saraville War Memorial High School in Saraville, John F. Kennedy High School in Woodbridge, the former St. Peter's High School in New Brunswick, and Rutgers University. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti was the first Latina woman to serve on the New Brunswick Board of Education and the New Brunswick City Council, serving from 1990 through 2010. Furthermore, Blanquita Valenti was the first Latina woman to win a countywide election to serve on the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, now Commissioners, where she served for 15 years, retiring at the end of her term in 2019. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti was active in the local community, having served on the Board of Directors of St. Peter's University Hospital, the Board of Directors of Middlesex County College, was a founding and charter member of the Puerto Rican Action Board, and a founding member of Aspira, Inc., of New Jersey. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti will be remembered as a true trailblazer, always placing public service before self, and earning the respect and admiration of all those who knew her. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti was a dedicated wife, her husband of 51 years, Carl T. Valenti, having passed in 2008, mother to her five children, Carl, Mary, Terry, Tom, and Rosie, and grandmother to her 10 grandchildren. And whereas, Blanquita Valenti will always be remembered for her compassion, determination to always help those in need, and her commitment to community, having left the world around her a better place because of her values and service to this city and to all of Middlesex County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the New Brunswick City Council, that the members of council express their profound sympathy to Blanquita's children, Carl, Mary, Terry, Tom, and Rosie, along with her 10 grandchildren, the entire extended Valenti family, as well as the merit of her friends and colleagues, and their hope that the life and service of this remarkable woman will forever be remembered in the annals of the City of New Brunswick. And be it further resolved that this resolution engrossed in the minutes of council. Be it further resolved that certified copies of this resolution shall be sent by the city clerk to the following: Carl J. Valenti, Mary Dolsky, Marie Teresa Terry Valenti, Thomas D. Valenti, and Rosemarie Hannigan, adopted by council, April 7th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Shammy. So at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only for up to five minutes per person, one time. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. A B C.
Unmuted.
E F G. H I J K.
Charlie Cradville.
Okay, Mr. Cradville. L M N. Danielle Moore. Okay, Ms. Moore. O P Q. R S T. U V. W X Y Z. Are there any other members who'd like to speak on the resolutions only? This will be the last call, which is to speak on the resolutions. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Muted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Cradville, will you state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record, please?
Charlie Cradville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. I live on Sedam Street in the Second Ward of New Brunswick. I wanted to ask about Resolution Number 6, the shared services agreement with the New Brunswick Board of Education. Want to clarify, this is $4.02 million that the board would be paying to the city for these services, and I want to understand what time period-- yeah, I want to understand what time period this covers and how it compares to last year's shared services agreement, and how the fact that schools have been closed, that physical buildings have been closed for over a year plays into this. Obviously, not the same things are going on this year. So can anybody tell me what time period this covers and how it compares to the previous time period, what you're planning for?
From what I understand, this is for the time period of 20-- this is the school year 2021, 2022. Last year, there was a decrease in the amount of money that we receive from the Board of Education, obviously because of the COVID closure with everything. So last year, it was 2.54, and the year before that, in 2019, it was 3.18. And if you'd like to know, the services that are provided are in-school security, the DARE program, the GREAT program, safe roads to school and playground security, and then the after-school programs with the RAC and Sister Cities, and then maintenance and upkeep for the Board of Education use of Memorial Stadium, Murphy Park, Feastery Park, and Archibald Park. And that also includes the money for passing current capital improvements and SS trash removal.
Okay, thank you. Can anybody tell me why the amount is increasing over the amount two years ago? I mean, I understand the decrease due to, you know, the closure of the school buildings for last year, but you told me that previously it was 3.18, this year it's 4.02. What is driving that increase in the payment from the schools?
It wasn't 3.18, it was 3.869, so the increase is approximately $160,000, and it relates more to increase in volume of services, not in any new services.
Okay. Thank you kindly. That's all for resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Okay. Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record? Ms. Moore?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can. Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Danielle Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I live on Somerset Street. Well, first, I would like to say, oh, in regards to the resolutions, wow, I've never seen a president who just reads the top of these, every-- not really reading, explaining what every resolution is about, due to where just to read the top of this, wow, you must be an immediately to get out of this meeting, just where I've never seen someone read just the top of every--
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions relating to the resolutions?
Oh, okay, I'm asking a question. Why didn't you read the whole entire resolution correctly? That's a question, isn't it?
There-- oh, it wasn't a question. You were making a statement, and there is nothing that says that those need to be read like that. It's per president's choice, and B, it is a courtesy just by reading that into the record and--
Okay, thank you, because the first time I ever seen you, you only want to ever do it. Okay, my question is on number 20, Joyce Kilmer Avenue, roadway improvement?
Yes.
Uh, so what is the next question? What is being done?
This is a request for advertisement. It's a request to put an advertisement out for bids, that's all this resolution is.
Is Mr. Valenti going to get the job?
He would tell you the same thing. It's a request to put out an advertisement for bids.
Uh, if I may ask, Mr. Valently, is this based on the job starting from, I can't think of the name of this street, across the Reed Street all the way up to the high school? Is this a job where you're requesting bids on? I know Joyce Kilmer Avenue is going to be redone that way.
You give me a moment, I'll look for your answer, Ms. Moore.
Is this--
Madam Council--
I don't need you to keep trying to kill my time.
Excuse me, Madam Council President, this is Dan Burke, City Engineer. I'd be happy to respond if you'd like.
Uh, sure, you may do that.
Ma'am, Ms. Moore, the extent of the project, and first off, I'll say that the project is substantially funded through a NJDOT Municipal Local Aid Grant, so the bulk of the cost of this project will be funded through a grant and not the local taxpayers. The limits of the project along Joyce Kilmer are from 12th down to Loretta, about a 4,000-foot run. The work will include improvements to the sidewalks, handicap accessible crossings, pavement markings, and new pavement throughout the limits of that work, about 4,000 feet in total. So it'll go from--
Thank you.
Yes, I do remember, know it was passed already, but okay, now I see what you're saying. You want the bids on the job doing. And like I said before, President, due to where you're not able to ask, answer every question, and like I said, I wish you'd stop killing and trying to kill my time if I have a question for Mr. Valently, due to where he's the engineer, not you.
Ms. Moore, every question goes through me. I'm the chair of the meeting, that's how these meetings are run.
But due to where it's never been like this, due to where you feel that you know every question, to kill somebody's time, due to where--
Okay, do you have any other questions? Do you have any other questions relating to the resolutions?
Uh, yes, it was one more. That was for 12.
Yes.
Uh, yes, would you--
But what is it for? Yes, it's for 30 trash receptacles.
So 30 trash cans in every park?
I don't know if they're going in every park, but they need to do this bid to get the 30 trash receptacles, to have them on hand to use in locations throughout the city.
Okay, Ms. Moore, your time has expired. Council President, there are no more members of the public on the list.
Hello? Resolutions?
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Now, we have items for discussion by council, and I want to start, I think I have five or six items I want to discuss, and then I'll open it up to my councilmates. First, I just want to announce that the Dial-A-Ride program is back in service, and everything's been properly equipped for COVID safety. Then, just an announcement that the Hungarian Festival has been canceled due to ongoing COVID-related safety concerns. But I do know that the Magyar Reformed Church is doing, are selling Hungarian foods on April 17th from 11:00 to 2:00 at their church, in case anybody is interested. I wanted to acknowledge that Elijah's Promise serves almost 31,000 meals in the month of March, and that is just, they're just such a phenomenal organization. We're lucky to have them in the city limits. And then, the council and staff received an email from a member of the public regarding concern over illicit activity in the Second Ward, and I would like to ask Deputy Director Miller if you could please address some of those concerns.
Sure. Received correspondence as well, and the residents are concerned about drug activity and loitering in the area. We have made it a director patrol, as well as our Street Crimes Unit is in that area to enforce illicit activity. Additionally, I spoke with Captain of Special Operations. We will be deploying our mobile police precinct to that neighborhood, as well as our community relations officer Detective Ramirez is going to be setting up a crime watch meeting with the Second Ward, Crime Watch, so they can further discuss the issues and speak in more detail about the problems there.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Director.
You're welcome.
And then, the last thing I have on my list here is that at the last meeting, there were comments related to the upcoming school board election, and then for reasons of pragmatically just concerns, the City Council has no jurisdiction relating to these matters, and I believe that precludes this body from further comment. That being said, I would like to ask our city clerk to provide the public with an update of polling locations and any information that she feels she would like to share. Madam Clerk, if you would?
Thank you, Council President. As of this afternoon, the County Board of Election Commissioners have approved 10 locations to be used for the school board election. The election will take place on April 20th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The locations available for in-person voter voting are as follows. Lord Sterling Community School. The Central Office Board of Education Gymnasium. Lincoln School. Wilder Wilson School. The Public Works Garage. Red Shaw School. The New Brunswick Middle School. First Reformed Church. Robeson and Schwartz Community Center. And the Roosevelt School. The locations available have all passed the requirements needed to be used as polling locations during this ongoing pandemic. Any voter who wishes to apply for a mail-in ballot for the annual school board election, the deadline date is April 13th. Any voter who wishes to apply for a mail-in ballot in person can stop into the county clerk's office. The county clerk's office has extended hours. This information will be posted on our city website tomorrow. That's all I have for you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I'd like to ask if any of my fellow council members have anything they'd like to address with--
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
I just have something very quick, and you mentioned some of it. Last week, we lost another reception of public servants by the unexpected death of County Commissioner Kenneth Armwood, so to his family-- So, to his family, friends, and colleagues, I would like to offer my deepest sympathies. Uh, may he rest in peace. Uh, in terms of, uh, I just want to add, um, Ms. Moore, you made a question about the receptacles that are being purchased. And to the rest of my knowledge, I just want to put out there that part of those are going to be used, uh, on French Street, because they are part of the, uh, the City and Esperanza Project unification, uh, project, uh, of the corridor of the French Street area. And, um, just very quickly, I just want to say that I'm confident by the decisions made by our city clerk. I know that the decisions that she had to make, uh, recommendations were made with, uh, were worth thought. They were, uh, thinking about the best interest of our residents and to make sure that they go vote in a safe manner under our current circumstances. So, I want to thank her for, uh, her efforts to make sure that our residents will be able and are able to vote in a safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, hearing no more, um, comment from the council, I'd like to ask for our OEM update.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, so, we continue to see a third wave of cases locally and around the state. The state predicts a peak in late April to mid-May, depending on how quickly vaccinations continue to roll out. New Jersey recently surpassed one point nine million people fully vaccinated for COVID-nineteen. On Monday, April nineteenth, everyone ages sixteen and older will be eligible for the COVID vaccine. Vaccinations are available at multiple locations locally and statewide. Local vaccination locations include the Eldred Hotel, Chandler Health Center, Rite Aid on George Street, and Walgreens on Jersey Avenue. For a statewide list, please visit the state website. Free COVID-nineteen testing every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from ten AM to six PM at the New Brunswick Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Seven Van Dyke Avenue. There is no appointment necessary for this location. Free COVID-nineteen testing is also available at Unity Square, Community Center on Remsen Avenue, every Tuesday from ten AM to two PM. There's no appointments necessary for this location. The city continues to share updates, information about COVID-nineteen in our website and social media. The COVID-nineteen Report podcast on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They can be found on the city's website at cityofnewbrunswick.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rawls. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, ma'am, I will. Each member of the public wishes to address the council. Please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. A, B, C, D?
Unmuted.
C, F, G? H, I, J? L, M? Danielle Moore?
Uh, Charlie Cradaville, please.
Okay. N, O, P?
Right as well. Sorry.
Did you get Danielle Moore? I have Mr. Cradaville and Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
You're welcome. N, O, P? Q, R, S, T?
Linda Stork?
Okay, Ms. Stork? Q, V? W, X, Y, Z? Is there any other public, like, or comments needed? If, if you're not speaking, could you please put your phone on mute? This is the last call? Okay. Council President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Cradaville, the floor is yours.
Thank you, uh, once again, Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick. I do want to take a moment to say rest in peace to Kenneth Armwood and sincere condolences to his family and all the friends that he had. I know he was a well-liked man, and he will absolutely be missed. Um, I definitely, uh, miss him. So, can I please ask, uh, since the deputy director is here, can he or someone else tell me his salary? Joseph Miller's salary?
Mr. Cradaville, I am in receipt of some of your correspondence, and I do, I was able to get a salary for you. So, that is two hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
Wow. I've got to say, that is a, a lot of money, uh. And, you know, considering the level of transparency that we get from, uh, that official, I've got to say, that's way too much. Uh, I mean, thinking about how many, uh, you know, city clerks you could hire with that money, how many, uh, uh, Department of Public Works employees could be hired with that money? That seems like an awfully high salary for him. Um, but I'll move on, thank you for answering my question. Uh, is it true that Anthony Jones Jr. has applied to join the New Brunswick Fire Department despite his criminal conviction that forced him to resign from the police department?
Now, that, I don't have, I don't have any information on that, because from what I understand, there is no, um, no hiring action with the city at this time. And there's no resolution or business of relation before this board. But I, I, I'm happy to listen to your comments and take anything under advisement if you have anything to say about it.
Okay, I would definitely suggest he would not be a good candidate for public employment, uh, given, uh, why, why and how he left the New Brunswick Police Department. I think that if folks look into his time on the police department, they'll also see that he abused his power as a police officer. So, the last thing we need to do is bring him back on the payroll. Um, I want to, uh, take a moment to thank everyone who, uh, opposed the closure of polling locations. Uh, we were, of course, told at the last council meeting that this was a done deal, and it's too late to change anything. But, uh, several organizations and, you know, just good citizens of New Brunswick rallied and spoke up and made their voices heard, and that is why the New Brunswick Housing Authority Office and the Roosevelt School will be open at the polling location for the April twentieth school board election. And I want to give special thanks to the three candidates, uh, running on the students' first ticket that made it a point to, uh, you know, take time out of their campaigning to advocate for voters to have access. And, and, uh, obviously, we're, we're all still upset and disturbed that four of the normal polling places won't be open. But I do want to give thanks to those who made it possible to secure the reopening of those two. And I do have some questions respectfully for the city clerk about this. The Labor Education Center not being open is going to be a huge hardship for residents of Ward One District Six, in particular, the Toad Manor Apartments. They'll have to walk about two miles if they don't have a vehicle to go vote. They'll have to cross Route eighteen and Route one to do it. And, um, I can't figure out why the Rutgers Labor Education Center is not going to be open for the election. Can she enlighten us as to, uh, if Rutgers, uh, was willing to make that building available as a polling location? Or if, uh, they, they declined? Can you, can you enlighten us if you had any conversations with them, Madam Clerk? Through the chair?
Uh, Ma- Madam Clerk, is this something you could get back to Mr. Cradaville on tomorrow, once you're through with his comments or after the meeting?
Sure, Madam President. I can get back to him.
Okay, I, I am, I am work, thank you. I am working on an article about it, so I'd appreciate the answer as soon as possible. And I, as a Rutgers alum, I'm very disappointed that Rutgers was non-responsive to my own inquiries about this matter. And, uh, it's my understanding today that, that there was little information available about this. And, uh, you know, Rutgers holds themselves out as an organization that fosters civic engagement and, you know, uh, supports voter participation. So, it's really damning if they're not, uh, um, going to make that building available for the election and as a result, suppress the votes of, of their neighbors in New Brunswick. So, um, I, I know there's the, the, the other, the other locations, I can hear that I'm out of time, so I'll just ask if somebody could tell me about the easy.
And, Mr. Cr- Mr. Cradaville, your time expired, and Ms. Belladonna will get back to you tomorrow regarding, uh, the election issue. And thank you for your comments.
Madam President?
Who's next one? Yeah, yeah.
Um, it was my understanding that, that the last council meeting, it was a total done deal. As the city clerk indicated, there was supposed to be a meeting April first with the Board of Elections. So, it was certainly not a done deal, as far as I remember.
No, you're correct, Don, the, the meeting was scheduled for April, for April first, after our meeting. That's, that's my understanding of it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, you have five minutes, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, the floor is yours.
Well, okay, the first question I do have for you, uh, you, President, Susan Corlovely. Uh, since you're president of the planning board and president of the council, for sure, this is something you can answer. It, it, it's true that after meeting with this project, with the school being knocked down and with Rutgers Cancer Center being built, that they said, which also you confirmed as well, said that Somerset Street would not be closed off at any time regards to this project.
I, I don't recall that I, I don't recall that I made that statement about a road closure, but I can certainly look into it for you.
No, 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 oh, now you, as, as much you know, I know about traffic. So, okay, if you didn't say, didn't, and the, the workers there for contrast, that the world would not be closed at no time during this project?
I just said to you, I don't recall off the top of my head, and I certainly am willing to look into it for you and get you an answer.
Oh, well, don't worry, I'm, because I'm surely going to do with the video, and I'm going to make sure with the video where it matches. And then, I'm also going to put the pictures. I, I don't see how you're pretending like you don't remember, as much as you kept cutting me off regards to traffic, disrespecting me, and just let, let them say, okay, it's not going to be, uh, cut off at no time. Oh, I'm going to make sure I have the video and the pictures to show. Now, what, you're pretending that you don't know what was said with the board meeting? Because, yes, that was far as on March tenth, due to where Somerset Street was closed. And like I said, due to where I don't believe that this project that you're in charge of is going to really be working, just like they said at the beginning of April, they would start working on the school over there. No one's over there yet doing, doing any work. So, yes, like I said, I'm making sure I keep every, ev- evidence of this. And believe me, it surely will be spread out to show, wow, you are not meant to be president for, for council. Now, my question is for Captain, Ca- Captain Miller, please. Uh, would you please tell me if it's true that fifty percent of the police department is not from Middlesex County?
Ms. Moore, everything goes through the chair, I don't know how many times I need to explain this to you. If you want to ask a question, you ask me, and I direct it, or I have an answer for you.
Please, you seem to do it every time, you try to do this just to kill my time. I asked you, and I'm asking you, would you please ask Mr. Miller, Ca- Captain Miller, is it true? That, okay, is it?
That's not how you framed this question.
I wish you would stop trying to just kill my time. I asked, would you please ask Captain Miller, is it true that fifty percent of the, uh, the police departments are not from Middlesex County?
Deputy Director Miller, do you have an answer for, for this question at this time?
Uh, Ms. Moore just asked if fifty percent of the police departments are from Middlesex County. I, I think she's asking, are the officers in New Brunswick from Middlesex County? Is that correct, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, um, I do not know the addresses of the officers that work here. I can tell you that to be hired as a New Brunswick police officer, there is a residence, residency requirement. You must live within the city of New Brunswick, um, prior to, um, applying for the position. And then, um, you're required to stay in New Brunswick for, um, three years afterwards. After that timeframe, um, you're not required to live in the city any longer. Um, and again, I do not know the personal addresses of the officers here.
Thank you, because like I said, I, I feel too much is going on, where I don't know if it's because the courthouse is closed or be, because the jailhouse is too crowded. But I feel that the, the police officers are not really handling, doing anything to keep the crime down, even with people speeding, not even tickets, come on, that's somebody's highway people, what? The police are right there, what? Do you really want me to start taking pictures of seeing the officers just sitting in groups, talking, chatting? What, where they don't do, do, do tickets anymore? Why do you think so much crime is really happening in New Brunswick? Because, what, the police officers don't do anything?
Ms. Moore, your time has expired. Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork. Thank you. Ms. Stork, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record, please? Ms. Stork?
Unmuted.
Ms. Stork? Ms. Stork? Madam Clerk, she was the last speaker on the list, correct?
Correct, Council President.
I, is there any way to see if she's on the phone and on mute, or I, I don't know how, yes? On my phone, okay.
Council President, we, we have, oh, Ms. Stork, is that you?
Yes, that's me, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thank you.
I apparently was muted.
Okay, Ms. Stork, can you please state?
Just muted.
Okay, can you state, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please?
Yes, Linda Stork, S-T-O-R-K.
Muted.
Park Boulevard. Thank you, the floor is yours. Okay. Thank you. Uh, the first question is about the rental assistance program. Um, how is that going? Is there money left in it? And, um, so, and how, well, well, first of all, can I get an idea how much money is left in that program? Because a lot, a lot of people are looking for help with their rent. And I don't know what to tell them, except that, you know, on the website, it says not taking applications. But it doesn't really say if they will be opening it up again.
If you'd like to address, you know, make your comments and concerns, then I can have someone get back to you with that information. I'll, I'll take note of, of what you're asking for, and I'll have some money, and I'll have some cash back to you.
Okay, because what I'd like to suggest is that, um, this, this, that the city makes some effort with some of the, um, you know, with some of the, uh, pandemic relief money. That program has a lot of requirements. It's a nine-page application, you have to show five pay stubs from last February before the pandemic started. Some people don't even get pay stubs at their job. So, you know, I'd like to see us try to address, y- you know, the people that are still falling through the cracks, even with the rental assistance program, that aren't able to access that aid. I think that's why there, there's always so much money left in there. People are having a hard time. People are having a hard time filling out the application and coming up with all the paperwork. So, also, not a good translation into Spanish.
No, no, we do. I mean, we definitely want to try to help. We definitely want to try to help people if we can. And I'll, you know, I'll take your comments, and I'll see what, and I'll try to get you, well, I will get you an answer. Okay, good, thank you.
Council President?
My other question is about the?
Hello? Council President, I just wanted, if I could address, or maybe I could do it when she's done, about the rental applications?
No, if you want, well, yeah, do it when she's done, so she, so she can continue.
Or either stop my clock. I mean, it doesn't matter.
No, just continue, Ms. Stork.
Okay, because the other, the other question is a totally different subject. This is about the police use of force website that came out today on newjersey.com.
Okay.
So, I tried to look up, I, yeah, I tried, I was trying to look up New Brunswick to see, you know, how many incidents and, you know, the descriptions of the incidents and everything. But it looks like for the last, so they only have up until March 1st. And the last three months that are on there, so February, January, December, they're all flat. It, it looks like at one, so either there was exactly one incident, which was way lower than any other month. There was exactly one incident, incident, three months in a row, or no data was turned in for those months. And it just scores as one, you know, a flat one instead of zero. So, I would like to know if you could direct to Captain Miller to find out what is the story with that? Was there really exactly one incident of use of force in three months in a row?
Deputy Director Miller, I'm not familiar at all with this. I'm not familiar at all with the website. Do you have any comment on, on this?
Yes, I actually went on the website myself, and I got, I saw the same thing. It's definitely not up to speed yet, but it's not run by the New Brunswick Police Department. It's run by the Attorney General's Office from the state of New Jersey. We have submitted all our data to them. I don't know what the data is off the top of my head. There is more than one use of force. But there's no, you know, anything influx that hasn't been consistent with other years. I imagine this is a new system that the state is using. I'm sure they will improve it and get it up to speed as they can. There has been, you know, a lot of glitches back and forth when they got the thing going. But I'm sure in time, they'll figure out the technical difficulties.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, my question was actually if the data had been submitted. I just wanted to know if it had been submitted, or if it was flat like that.
We have submitted everything that they've asked for. No, we've submitted everything they've asked for.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you. I would also like to know specifically about the, the New Brunswick, the Senior Center polling place, which is around the back, and, and about the regions where that's going to?
Ms. Stork, your time. Ms. Stork, your time is up. But let me, if you have a question about the polling locations, if it's something that you want to email our city clerk about, you're more than welcome to do that. And Ms., Vice President Escobar, did you want to respond to something with the rent issue?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make, I want to make Ms. Stork know that the city, the Office of Van Dominguez, Office of Economic Development, and Esperanza Project and other community organizations have been working to make sure that the community knows about the program, and they knew about the program. They have helped many residents with the application. They have conducted a webinar in English and Spanish to assist our residents with it. So, at this time, obviously, if it's closed, but if it gets to be open or any questions that they might have, I will, if there's a language barrier, I will recommend to call New Brunswick tomorrow and talk to Charles Bergman. He has been working very hard with Mr. Dominguez in making sure that the community is aware and applies for the fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. And do we have any other members of the public?
No, Council President, no more members of the public on the list.
Thank you. Do any, do any other council members have anything they'd like to address at this time?
No ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Escora Ludwig.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.